All right, my clock says that it's straight up 6:00. And I'll call the April 26 meeting, 2018 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Alyssa, you coming? Oh, okay. Viviana, would you please call the roll?
Debbie Moore.
Right here.
Patrick Connell.
Here.
Alyssa Halli-Schram. Diana Rose.
Here.
Cynthia Meyer.
Here.
Sue Ann Frugé.
Here.
Richard Gartman.
Here.
Matt Lassen.
Here.
And Cheryl Lee let us know that she would not be able to make it.
Thank you very much. We do have a call. Second item, it says in comments, comments will be heard from the audience on any topic not listed on the agenda, not to exceed three minutes in length. To address the commission, please submit a fully completed request card to the commission's secretary prior to the beginning of the meeting. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, if a citizen discusses any item not on the agenda, the commission cannot discuss issues raised or make any decision at this time. Issues may be referred to city staff for research and possible future action. To address the commission concerning any item on the agenda, please submit a fully completed request card to the commission secretary prior to the consideration of that item. So, we will move on to item number three, items for individual consideration. Item 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the March 29, 2018, Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. Does anyone have any additions, corrections?
Motion to approve as is.
Motion to approve by Patrick, second by Richard. Is there any opposition? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? And approved as submitted. Item 3B, public hearing to consider action to recommend approval of a conditional use permit to allow 120-foot water standpipe to exceed the 35-foot maximum height allowance at 113 Tahitian Drive, Lot A of Tahitian Village, Unit 1, an area zone C2, Commercial 2, within the city limits of Bastrop, and forward to the next city council meeting. Ms. Bills.
Good evening. Yes, what we're here to talk about tonight is a conditional use permit for a new 500,000-gallon water standpipe that'll be 120 feet tall, and it'll be for the Bastrop County Water Control and Improvement District, number, I said number two.
Two.
Are you number two? You are number two, good. I somehow decided you were number one in my head. So, if there's any...
The agenda says two.
Good.
It better be two.
So, the zoning for this lot and for most of this area is Commercial 2, which is our C2 district, which the maximum height is 35 feet. Anything over that, in certain categories, requires a conditional use permit, which a utility is one of those that can ask for the CUP for the height over 35 feet. As we, as the agenda said, we're at 113 Tahitian Drive, and just to kind of give you where this is, the location where the standpipe would go would be over here, you've got Walgreens on 71, and you've got the Sitgo Station over here, gas station, and then you have the WCID's offices over here. The proposed standpipe would go on this portion of the lot currently, and they kind of faded out on the screen, but in your packet, there's currently the existing well, pump station, and ground storage tanks at this site. On that north boundary line, the property line, which is, I share with Walgreens, there's a five-foot setback on the flat, however, they also have a 10-foot electric easement there, so it'll have to be a minimum of 10 feet away from the property line on the north. So, Section 43.4, Special Height Regulations, is what discusses the allowance for a CUP for specifically standpipes, and somehow they're in the same category as church steeples and those kind of things. And there's a number of additional factors that the P&amp;Z can consider for the, in this allowance. One is preservation of views, access to light and air of surrounding properties, height, bulk, and scale to the surrounding area, using topographic conditions, which is mostly terracing, to minimize the impact of the surrounding landscape, and then the relationship of doors and windows of whatever we're talking about to the surrounding area for privacy of neighbors, and then also fire-related standards. In this instance, we're talking about a water tower. There are no architectural features, there are no windows or doors to be worried about. It pretty much is what it is. There's not a lot that can be looked at, that the impact is minimal, we have these throughout town. The only other kind of, I thought that P&amp;Z could look at is potentially paint color in the exterior materials on what it'll look like to the neighbors. In our, Section 33.2 is the standard conditional use permit.
I don't mean to stop here. Is there, is there a way to show the folks on Facebook Live what she's showing? Are we able to do that? Somebody's asking for it, if possible. I didn't mean to mess up your flow.
Too sorrowful, man.
I know.
I'm sorry.
With the standard conditional use permit regulations, there's five main criteria that the use is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses. This lot already exists as the area for their water resources for the WCID, so this'll just be an addition.
Hang on, Jim. Someone is approaching from their rear.
If we can, or if it's a big deal, we should stop the meeting for it, but they were asking for it, so I just wanted to see if we could. Because I know this is in the city, but I think there's a lot of people in Tahitian Village that are interested in it, from what I understand, so.
Is that attachment forward? Is that what it will look like in our packet?
It's an example of what it'll look like, and the applicants are here, so they can address those questions then.
I just messed up your whole flow. I just killed it. It's all right. Yeah, if it's gonna be a big pain, then we could just move on. No big deal. We tried. We gave it a million effort. All right.
And all of this information, the same information, is in the packet online.
Okay. Maybe when you get back there, you can try and link it to the comments. That'll work.
Yeah, all these, all the same pictures and information is in the packet. So, first one, yes, it is harmonious and compatible use. Second, the activities requested by the applicant are normally associated with permitted use in the base district. This is Zone C2, our highest commercial district for the city, so it's a, you have other intense uses, gas stations and Walgreens in the area. The nature of the use is reasonable. Standpipes are a necessary use if we want to have water and water pressure in the area, and then any negative impact on the surrounding area has been mitigated. There was a question that came in with our public comments on the existing, they were concerned about the unbuildable area in the area, and I think what they were referring to is there's an existing 150-foot sanitary control easement around the existing well, and that's going to remain the same. There's no existing area, or no expansion of that area being proposed. And then the additional, any additional criteria, which was included in the previous slide. Additionally, there's the standard CUP conditions. If it is granted, that construction shall conform with the City of Bastrop regulations. Any necessary permits will be acquired prior to occup, or completion of the project, and that a building permit shall be applied for and secured within one year of the second reading. The next step, if P&amp;Z, well, with P&amp;Z's recommendation, it'll be forwarded to the May 8 city council meeting. If you guys have any questions, staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit.
Commissioners, any questions?
I did. So, currently, there, there's a huge issue with like fire hydrants and stuff within the county area of Tahitian Village. Is this gonna help that? And if so, to what degree? And I realize that the, most of Tahitian Village is not in the city, but...
Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Jim Willett. I'm the general manager of the utility. Fire protection begins with water, and if you don't have the water, you can't have fire protection. So, this will be the first phase in actually providing something that'll be a reasonable beginning to, reasonable fire protection over time.
Okay.
So, without it, you can't do much.
And is this, is this the first of a few that need to go to help the village with water pressure, or is this like the one?
Well, there's a conceptual idea that two would be ideal. Every time you have something, and you want to be able to take it offline to work on it, you want to have redundancy built in.
Right.
It'll help be decision whether the board wishes to invest enough money to build two of them. There's one here, and then there'd be one in the county up at our second plant off McAllister Road, and they're the same exact elevation, so they would work hydraulically very well. Whether that happens or not, I don't know at this point, but this at least is one we wish to pursue, so the beginning of having that adequate supply of water to begin the process of actually improving the circumstances up there and getting some reasonable level of fire protection.
Okay.
You want to talk about the color?
Sure.
Sky blue. Traditionally, what you always want to do is have something that's of light nature, especially in a warm climate like this, because obviously the sunlight beating on water, it's gonna heat it up with a tank. So, traditionally, it's white, or light white and off-white, or light blue. Sky blue's generally the desired color for water tanks. So, if you have a preference, we'd be well and happy to accommodate that, but those are the two colors that make physical sense based upon the environmental conditions.
Is there anything else around that area that's this high? I'm trying to visualize, and I think this would be probably the tallest thing that you'd be able to see.
Probably at that juncture, because that is a pretty high point in the community. You do have your water tanks that the city owns right across from the Texas Roadhouse Grill.
Right.
So, that would be the only other close one. And then, as you're heading out 71, heading east, you have Aqua Storage has their elevated water tank up on the hill, so that'd probably be a little bit higher.
Is this water tank gonna be labeled like City of Bastrop or anything like that, or is it just gonna be a flat color?
We have not come to that juncture. There is a, it's very easy these days when you build this type of tank. Traditionally, you used to have to get up there and paint decals or wording.
Right.
This, they can actually put a vinyl sticker on there if you wanted to say, "Welcome to Bastrop, welcome Tahitian Village," whatever. Ultimately, people like yourself desire is the right thing to do.
My only concern, other than was this gonna improve fire protection and water for the district, or for the village, was how it will look, because it's gonna be hu, you know, huge right where it's at, and it's gonna be seen from the highway, which is not too far off. So, my thought would be that if it's, in order to make it more visually appealing, that we turn it into some type of, you know, City of Bastrop, or we, we mark it, so it's not just a big blue or white pipe, you know, sticking up that you see from the highway.
Sure, use it to some advantage, to make it aesthetically pleasing.
My thought only, I don't know if it agrees or disagrees, or I'm way off base, in which case I'll just turn my mic off.
Anyone else?
I definitely think the compatibility with the sky of the blue and the white makes a lot of sense. You don't want anything obnoxious. And as far as the, you know, welcome to Bastrop or anything, I just think it should be as quiet as possible and not so loud. So, I think your idea and the color and everything is right on on it.
Any other comment?
There was, actually, it was at the city council meeting, actually, on Tuesday night. They're repainting the other, cities repainting their tanks, and the comment was brought up, can we put a sign on them that says, "This is this park or that," so people could see from a distance what it was. So, it kind of fits along with the thing of, "Welcome to Bastrop," or something along that line. Since it's there, use it for that type of, hey, welcome to our town.
It is quite visible from 71. When you're coming up that hill, you'll see it up there on, perched up.
I kind of think it should say something about welcome to Tahitian Village. I don't, I don't see that as...
Oh, I'm not suggesting it. You're gonna get the difference of opinion.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have other, we're gonna have other tanks that are being repainted. Maybe we could make that suggestion to the other ones, that we have welcome to Bastrop there.
So, the only, the only, the only additional condition that I would like to see would be some type of marking consistent with other City of Bastrop water towers, whether it's the city name, and Tahitian Village can put their thing on there if they want to, you know, whatever. My, my preference would be that we have a condition where it has some type of marking indicating that you're in the City of Bastrop. I can't think of too many water towers that are that big. Even this one in the example is based in city, you know, that doesn't have some type of marking delineating, you know, where it's at. I think it just kind of fits with the town.
Well, maybe Jennifer, Jennifer could talk with the city and see what they're planning on doing, and do something compatible.
That's an easy part of it.
Okay.
The hard part's putting it up, and that can be decided.
There you go. That's right. Any other comments? Ready for a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Motion to accept the proposal.
And approve the CUP?
Approve the CUP.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Vivy, would you call the roll, please?
Absolutely. Debbie Moore.
Yes.
Patrick Connell.
Yes.
Diana Rose.
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer.
Yes.
Alyssa Halli-Schram.
Yes.
Sue Ann Frugé.
Yes.
Richard Gartman.
Yes.
Matt Lassen.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Your thing. At this point, we will recess the regular meeting and convene into workshop. Item four, item 4A is update on the draft subdivision ordinance.
Good evening. So, my update right now is that you all have a joint meeting with city council on May 10 at 6:00 PM to go over the draft subdivision ordinance with city council. So, that's, that's still where we're at with the subdivision ordinance, and so hopefully that will give us our chance to move forward after going over the details with city council.
Given the amount of time that we've spent going over this, how do you anticipate the council's interaction with us on these ordinance? Is it's gonna be an overview, and are they gonna submit some questions beforehand? I mean, it's 100 and how many pages?
Yes, I can, I can check on that, if they have questions already, or I think it'll start with just a brief, an overview, kind of a large overview, not get into quite the level of detail that we've gotten into in our meetings.
Okay.
That would be what I anticipate, but...
And then it would come back to us for final approval?
Yeah, well, so, the next step after running through kind of the overview with council is to go out to the public and start hitting specific groups, our engineers, our surveyors, all those different interest groups that will be using this, so that we can get their input.
And we hope it's publicized well.
Yes. And Dave's been working on his plan for how he's gonna get that out to the public. He's waiting, he was waiting on that to run it through council before doing that larger public input part.
And at the end of the public comment period, then it would come back to us?
Yeah, so it'll have to come back to you for public hearing and consideration, and then it'll go to city council for its first and second readings. It's adopted just as any ordinance would for the code of ordinances.
Okay. I know there's not a way of knowing for sure, but what is an estimate on the timeline you think it'll take to go through this whole process?
I don't know that I want to make that guess right now.
And Debbie, I think it kind of depends on what kind of feedback we get from the public, from developers, how many meetings we need to have to make sure that everybody gets to ask their questions. So, at this juncture, it was an initial timeframe of January. Since we've blown that out the water, I think we just take our time, and it takes as long as it takes to get a good ordinance.
Yeah, I kind of addressed the board, and this was really quickly, some thoughts I've had about just the, the ordinance and kind of going forward, something to think about. Having developed in the city both from a commercial aspect and from a residential aspect, you know, I kind of have two minds about this ordinance. You know, first off, I think from a commercial standpoint, yeah, we were a bit lost, but, you know, we ended up going through, jumping through some hoops and doing some stuff, and everything kind of went well. And I think that the organization they've added to the chapter provides a lot of clarity from that standpoint. I'm still a bit concerned from more of a residential standpoint, that the code doesn't go far enough, like, it defines everybody as a developer. And I realize if you're redoing your house, technically, you're developing it, but I believe there's a big difference between someone who is trying to live, work, and die in the City of Bastrop versus someone who's trying to sell a product in Bastrop. And I'm a little bit uncomfortable that we treat our residents exactly the same as we would develop, we would treat a multimillion-dollar developer. I don't think the code goes far enough to kind of delineate a difference there. I believe that the state of Texas taxes you differently based on where you live, you know, homestead exemption. I don't see why our code couldn't necessarily do the exact same thing, treat our residents differently. And looking at it, it's, it's a nice process, but the City of Austin is currently redoing their development standards. And the reason why is they've created gentrification of the entire city. They've driven the price of housing up, and now they're trying to redo their standards with a lot of pushback from all sides. And, you know, I know that we've talked a lot about keeping Bastrop an affordable place to live, but if the only way to develop in Bastrop, or redevelop your, the property you live on, is to pay an extra $10,000 in fees to professionals increasing the soft costs of development, that's a lot of money that people don't have. Then essentially, people are gonna be forced to sell their homes or just live in dilapidated checks because they can't keep them up. I don't think the city, I don't think this current draft does enough to really address these issues, so I'm definitely looking forward to citizen comments about it. I know I've talked to several citizens just recently, you know, two or three different people who are having, you know, a horrible time trying to get something done on their own property. I've talked to architects that work here in the city, and, you know, they're having a few issues as well. And so, whereas I really think our code does need to be redefined, and, or our ordinance does need to be redefined and streamlined, again, I, I believe that citizens deserve an extra consideration that, you know, someone who's coming in to sell a product doesn't necessarily need to have either. And so, just something to think going forward.
Sure, and if you'd like to draft something that we could go over at the May 10 meeting, I'm sure that everyone would be glad to hear your comments and your suggestions. If you can do that, it'd be great.
I like your observation about home. If you own the property and you've got a homestead on it, these rules apply to you, you know, kind of along the line what you're thinking. But it kind of, like you said, it makes it easier for the residents.
Certain things apply. If you're changing the footprint of the existing property, there's additional requirements rather than just repainting or whatever you're doing, making, making some adjustments. So, but if, if we want to hear what everyone has to say, because we want to get it right. So, if you have any suggestions, please have them for the May 10 meeting, so that we can have as much together as possible before we go out to the public.
So, the next item on the workshop is our update on our draft mobile food vendor ordinance, and staff has been working internally, going over their recommendations from the last meeting, working with our building official to see how some of the suggestions will work with our building code. And then our next step is to meet with the Bastrop County Environmental and Sanitation Services, as they are the authority that actual issues and then conducts the inspections for retail food operations. So, we want to make sure we're not tripping up anything that, that is in their territory or that causes a problem in the state health guidelines.
Would, would anything in there have anything to do, wouldn't affect or impact the comp plan or...
In the mobile food?
Yeah. No, okay. Somebody had asked me that, and I didn't think...
Affect the comp plan, comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
So, one thing I noticed since our last meeting, since I frequent Yoles more than I should, is Yoles is hard, hard piped, I don't know.
Hard wired, yeah.
Hard wired, but whatever. But they're, but they're, they are linked into our sewer system.
Sewer system, yeah.
Sewer system with like a grease trap and whatnot. So, you know, questions I have when you guys bring it back is, number one, is there gonna be a grandfather clause, and if so, how does that apply to those that are existing? If there's not, do we have a combination, so we're not unduly burdening, you know, businesses that have been here for a long time? And three is whether we should use that as a model going forward. I think one of the things I talked about was if we have like a food court, is it food court that we're calling a food court? Where those, those individual food courts could plug into the, into the sewer system, you know, with grease traps in place and such, so...
And that's one of the reasons, like, in kind of a brief discussion with them, we found out that by making them hardwire in, they cease to be a mobile food under the state code, and then start being enforced under a site like any other typical restaurant would be. So, by doing that, it actually changed their category with the health district. So, that's why we need to meet with them and see on those kind of issues if we're going to accidentally push people into the wrong category.
Right.
Which we're not intending to do.
So, that's just something I noticed, you know, since our last meeting, because I know we talked about it, and I just happened to notice that while I was over there, so...
So, it sounds like under the state codes, the minute you can no longer drive it, it becomes a building.
Yes, that, that is, what we understand is for mobile food, they actually are supposed to drive the unit to the health district for them to do the inspection there. So, once they have to drive out to go visit you, then it's, it's not a mobile unit anymore.
Kind of on those same lines, I guess, just out of curiosity, because you notice several of these places in Austin where technically they are mobile, but, you know, the tires have rotted off these vehicles, kind of a thing, and, you know, they just don't, I mean, is that kind of what we're addressing with that, or...
Yes, that's, that's one of the issues we're addressing with making sure they're truly mobile.
So, I have a question, and I don't know that much about how you regulate the health and safety of, of the trailers and, and the food. Is, when you said they have to drive, is that to get a, it's inspected, and then they receive a temporary permit, or...
No, this is for the health district, their food, their retail food permit.
That's something to operate, or...
Oh, okay. That's, that's what I'm... Yeah, that's, that's, the county is the one who issues those. So, all the restaurants in town, it's the county that goes in and does those inspections and issues their permits for operation.
Okay.
We issue permits for building, so, yeah. So, they're the ones in there making sure the food is the right temperature, and that the freezers are installed, are cooling to the right thing, that, that's what they do. We, we're looking at how is everything built, so...
We'll move on to 4C, discussion on future policy to allow existing site billboards to convert to digital.
I really meant to say static billboards on that, but...
Yeah.
So, just a little background, our sign code is in our building regulation, or our building code section, which is in Chapter 3. So, Article 3.2 is, regulates all of the signs within the city limits and in our one-mile statutory ETJ, so along certain highways, there is, it's not all of the ETJ, it's, but it's within 500 feet of 71 and 95, so the major thoroughfares. Per Section 3.2.09, new billboards are prohibited. So, any billboard you see on the highway existed prior to our code being adopted on signage, and as such, they are considered legal non-conforming signs in our code.
Do we know what the reason is? I know we're going way back, but what is the reason for no new billboards?
I, I would guess at the time, they did not want to see new billboards along the highway. So, we're talking the off-site signage.
So, is it that we've hit a limit, and we don't want to go over that, or it's, we, if we had our preference, they wouldn't exist?
I think it's, I think it probably is a combination of the two.
Okay.
I, this was, I think the first sign code was adopted in the 90s, this was the most recent update was 2008, so...
So, Buc-E's got in under...
That's, so Buc-E's is not a billboard sign, so...
Not, not all of them.
Yeah, we'll talk.
Yeah, it's a pylon. So, here's the difference between, a billboard sign is, is one of those signs, it's advertising for something that is not at that location. So, if you have a sign, like Buc-E's new sign is on their site, it's advertising the business that is there, so that is their site pylon sign. The, the billboard that's down 71 that's advertising Buc-E's on someone else's property, that's a billboard sign. That's, and those are typically owned by companies such as Lamar, Signad, you'll see them all advertised when they have empty signs. Just looking at, just doing a quick view, Lamar Signs keeps their inventory online, that you can go look them up, and just within our, along 71, in our regulatory area, they have over 60 signs, just Lamar. And I've counted at least five different companies that are in our area, so I would, we haven't done an inventory of all billboard signs, but I would guess we have over 100.
Lamar's also got theirs online, and they've got almost as many.
Yeah, so, there's a lot of, a lot of billboard signs along 95, 71. Yeah, I saw one in their inventory, and I didn't even realize there was a sign there. I drive by it every day and apparently don't look at it.
So, it doesn't work.
Yeah, sometimes, I'm not sure they do work, but... So, just some example of what a static billboard is. So, those, these are static billboards. You have your Buc-E's sign. I don't remember which one that one actually is. This one is, I think, in Colorado, but this is an example of how at nighttime... But this is an example of how at nighttime, they're typically, if they are lit, they're not always lit, but if they are, they're usually lit with lights from below that shine up onto the sign face. These are some examples of digital billboards, which is what we're here to discuss. During the daytime, they don't look a lot different. They can change every six seconds. So Textile does have regulations on billboards. And one of their regulations is they can't, this Signad can't change more than every six seconds. And I think it has to be, can't be a flashing, strobing thing. It has to be a-
A subtle change. Nice subtle change.
Yeah, subtle change. But it has to be, you know, one, giving you one message at a time. And then you can see at nighttime, they're lit up, and some can be quite bright. There are some regulations on Textile and the brightness. We do have in our code an outdoor writing dark sky ordinance. And at this point, we don't know how that, how these signs would interact with that ordinance without doing some additional research. Before we go down that road, the city has been approached by one of the sign companies asking if they're, if we would be willing to do a swap, that if we would be willing to swap a certain amount of signs for one digital billboard.
Like, like get rid of?
Like, get rid of four for one. Some number we haven't, you know, landed on. But as I said, there's 60 of just one company. If you even did like a one to four ratio, we could still have 25 digital billboards if, if you set a precedent on this.
I keep seeing visions of Las Vegas with digital boards.
So the very, the very last picture with the, the ba-, let's see, oh, the basketball scores on it, that's for TNT, that's the, that's what I, that's what I'm picturing.
And there is, so I used to drive by one all the time on I-35 in Round Rock. They have one right at your, on the southbound road going out of Round Rock under 45. It's a new digital billboard, and they did a similar swap. But after I started looking, they only had three billboards in their town to start with. So that's the only billboard on I-35 at this point, so. But it can be, it could be as distracting. It depends on how much you're trying to read it as you're driving, so.
One thing that, sorry, when I go to town to, to visit family, I always drive at night through Seeley and Katy, which are full of those digital signs. And at night, it like blinds you. There's, there's so many, though. But I just, I just think that it wouldn't go along with what we're trying to do with our ordinances and our dark sky plan and our, you know, our tourism. I just think that it's, it goes against how we want to present our town, whether it's at 2:00 AM in the morning or whether it's, you know, 6:00 PM at night. I just, I just think they're ugly, so.
That's my other thought, too, is I would sure would hate to live around one of those and have them lit up. I mean, I'd feel for the person that lives close by, and that would be very obnoxious to me, distracting.
I do find this, this get rid of four and get one rather interesting. But like you say, we already have so many.
So my preference is that these are horrible for here. But I'm intrigued by that, but it would have to be a ratio of more than four to one. Like, if you want to get rid of 10 and put one of, one of these on the, on the, along 71 only, like, you know, so you're, we're not near residential, but we can get rid of 10 other ones? That's, to me, there's, there's a trade-off there. But again, if, even if we did that, let's just say this one company, we'd end up with six digital, but we'd get rid of all the other ones. But, you know, to, to me, a, a regular static, as I described it, static billboard is very, it's just low-key, it's out here. It's, but, but these digital ones are like in your face, you know? And so I just, ah.
I think you can report back that we're not saying no, no, not ever, but we're not embracing it with open arms.
Well, I was going to say, I completely agree. I think that goes to another point as well, kind of what Patrick was making initially. I mean, what was the original idea behind limiting these signs to begin with? You know, technically, the city will throw something like that up because they just want all these non-conforming signs to eventually disappear and go away. So it may have been with the idea of just getting rid of them. And, you know, I think that's what, kind of like with the pylon sign with Buc-E's, although theirs is taller than what we normally allow. You have all these really tall signs. I think McDonald's has one, and a couple of the gas stations. And the idea is that, I mean, they can't really redo those signs. If they want to redo them, they have to bring them down to the lower height that's required. And that's kind of a way of phasing these things out that the city is often used. And so either we have to understand what the original purpose was of that or kind of rewrite it, I guess, into new code to kind of determine what's going on. But I will say, from the sign people's standpoint, you know, it feels like advertising on the highway is kind of dead. It's, it's, it's not terribly effective, especially for the prices that people pay for it. They just don't get very good, like, reports back as far as this advertising. People do it because they don't know what else to do, you know? But, you know, especially with social media, Facebook and other stuff, there's a lot of things they can do to advertise. But, so I think that the sign companies are definitely looking for another advantage to kind of help propel their businesses in a, in a kind of a dying market.
A lot of them are just locators, like, my business is here if you're looking for a Walmart or a gas station. But we have a lot more talking that we need to do. So the next-
I think to the point that Diane was making is what image does Bastrop want to have? If we're looking for that historic town, a big Las Vegas-style sign just doesn't work. It's, I don't think we're a place that you should go.
The other, the other thing that I'd like y'all to go back and find out is what their opinion is on signs that are digital, that are off after a certain, like when, like when the sun goes down, sign goes off. Sign comes on during the day, you can change your ads during the day, sign goes off at night. Because that essentially, because the daytime, you can't tell the difference, right? So we don't get that, that-
Other than that they change.
Right. So, so sun goes down, sign goes off. Sun comes up, sign goes on. That's a, I think it's a nice middle ground in addition to a four for one, or five for one, or whatever. But I think what most of us think of when we're, when we're thinking of like these in the town is, is just these, you know, you drive through town and billboards are just flash, flash and you go, we shut them off at night, we don't have that issue.
Are there a lot, it's not as bright at night, like maybe lower the wattage or something?
Or a static, or a static ad through the night. It's not, it's dimmer, and it's one ad through the night, it doesn't change. Which I think is, that flashiness of, of the change is what's going to give you that Las Vegas feel that we're trying to avoid, or at least what it sounds like.
I agree with Debbie, you saying we're not saying no, which is a nice, nice thing to say. I'm just going to say, when I even mention the word digital to citizens, they have the most stunned look on their face, like, are you kidding? I, I haven't heard anything positive at all about digital signs or the image that we want to portray in being in Bastrop. So that's just the way I feel.
I would say that, you know, one thing that, like, I think Austin has a few of these in bigger cities, but Textile will go in and they'll put a digital sign in for, you know, road problems or amber alerts or some kind of disaster or emergency. And, you know, we don't really benefit from any of that at the moment. But there's one positive benefit that these signs could have is that, you know, especially with, you know, updating information that's, you know, of, you know, dire necessity to understand, you know, whether amber alerts or, you know, hurricanes, floods, whatever.
Evacuation instructions during a fire.
I have a question. Would those type of digital signs that Matt's referencing be classified the same as these?
The Textile signs? No, because those are governmental signs. Those are the ones that actually hang over usually I-35 or any of their roads.
Right, they usually just have the letter messages and not-
And they do have portable ones, too, right?
They do, they have portable ones. City has, I think, one or two, too, that you can put up for announcements.
Anything else? We have a lot more talking to do.
And I think the next step of this is going to council and getting their kind of temperature on this, too. We're just trying to gauge before we do a lot of research and trying to figure out how this would work in our code, or how it would even be allowed. We want to, if, if the answer was no, just a flat no, then there wouldn't be a lot of point in moving forward. So we'll do some more research and-
Okay, thank you. So I will adjourn the workshop and convene back into regular session. And on a point of personal privilege, I've just learned recently that we're losing one of our members. She's going to be here through the joint meeting and-
Probably the night meeting as well.
Okay.
My husband and I are moving to College Station. He currently works at A&amp;M, and so we live here, and then he drives every day. And then we just had a baby, so we're realizing that's not-
Not going to work.
The most sustainable option at this point, so we're going to be moving. So I'm sad to go, and thank you all for letting me serve the time that I have here.
You've been a valuable member, and we will miss you. But at least we'll see you for a few more meetings.
Yes.
All right, item five.
Do we have any further, we had some citizens that showed up, please, who want to listen?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay. Number five, adjournment, do I see, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you.